Started, it's six o'clock, I think that clock's a little bit behind. So, Ms. Whitby, if you'll call the row, or Caitlin, Taylor, sorry.
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Ginn?
Here.
Height?
Present.
Coramis present.
Thank you very much, I invite you to rise for a prayer and pledge to be led by yours truly.
Our dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to meet here tonight as free men and women. It will give us the wisdom that we can tipper our actions and above all else walk in the light of God. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm moved. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. About communications, anybody want to pull a communication?
We got it.
Side of motion?
To accept in file one and two.
Don't move.
On the motion. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Before we get into business, I want to, you know, we've, this 2020 is census year, and we're really trying to attack the census this year to make sure that we get a really valid count. As Steve's going to tell you in just a minute, it's a lot of money riding on the table that we do this the correct way. We've started a PR campaign, Steve Shields has worked diligently and is doing a great job, and I ask if he would come tonight and give us an executive summary on what we're doing, how we're doing it, and so he can answer any questions. But if y'all get any questions, you'll know because he's going to teach you. So Steve, great job, tell us all about it.
Thanks, Mayor. First thing I think that's most important when we talk about this year's 2020 census is, as you can see right there, no citizenship question is on the census form, and that's something that, I know everywhere I go and everybody that I talk to, that's a big point of contention, and there is not anything, all of you have a census sample with the nine questions in front of you right there, and everything on the census will be confidential for 72 years. It's completely locked up, all the information can't go to anyone from ICE to FBI to any one that can be, that can have that information at their hands to do something with. The simple thing, and not to go into every question, but they're real simple questions. When you talk about asking name of people in a household, is it a house, apartment, mobile home, those type questions are on there. Asking the race, asking male or female, so very simple questions, and as Mayor mentioned, there's big money at hand right here. When you talk about $675 billion in federal fund, that's going to impact every area of our city. When you talk about roads in that area, when you talk about education in those areas, when you talk about medical facilities, new hospitals, new roads, all those things in those areas. That $675 billion breaks down to about $3,300 per person, per year, for 10 years. Okay, so we're talking 33,000, and as I've heard Mayor mention numerous times, if you take that and we happen to have a 10,000 under count, that equates to $3.3 million that we've lost right there. So there's big money out there. In 2010, we had a count of 62,304, and we feel like we've got a goal of getting over 70,000 in this year's count. If you look right there on the census scheduling, this has been something that's been a little bit hard to get our hands on, but we finally got information. I spent some time last week talking to Sam Abasi. Alan Green has been very helpful with the US Census Bureau. Our local guy right here, Sam, is out of Chicago with the US Census Bureau. In mid-March, March 12 through 20, we will all receive, all residents will receive a mailer inviting us to either go online or call an 800 number to fill out the census. This is the first time since 1790 that it's been offered online. Okay, so we'll get the initial invitation. Shortly after that, say between March 16 and March 24, we'll get a second mailer, an invitation to go online or call the number to fill out the census. Shortly after that, there will be a third mailer. Now this gets us to the mid-April timeframe, early to mid-April. That will encourage the phone call or to go online as well. On the fourth mailer, which will be sometime end of April period, maybe May 1st, we'll get a paper questionnaire. So everyone will receive a paper questionnaire. Now when I'm saying everyone, I'm saying everyone who has not filled it out online prior or made the phone call prior. Shortly after that, if we have not filled it out at our residences, that's when the numerators will come around and knock door to door in early May. Okay, so that's kind of the timeframe. This year, everything will be shut down on July 31st. We were told at one point, we thought it might go to mid-September, that is not correct. It's going to stop on July 31st because all the count information has to go to Washington and be there by the end of the year. Several things that we've done as a city, Mayor agreed to let us put stickers on all 613 city vehicles, you'll see them on the back. Our tagline is "Count Me In," so you'll see a lot of those on all the different vehicles out there. We've got a ton of yard signs out there already. I will have yard signs right here at the door when council meeting is over tonight for anybody that's wanting to take one and put them in their yards. We've also got these buttons. This is one in Spanish. Everything that we have done has been in Spanish and English, as you all have one of each in front of you tonight. But these buttons are being worn at various banks, at various organizations around the city. Some of the other things that we've encouraged some business owners to do, and a lot of them have been very open, John Owens has been outstanding with the chamber helping us with this. And going to different business owners and having, on Census Day, which is April 1st, having a computer available, let me back up one time, on the internet, that will become available online in that mid-March area when we receive our first mailer. But we're going to have different places where businesses will have people that can go online at their business and fill out the census on different days. And that's something that Judge Jones and Judge Morley have been very good about opening up, and our IT department's going to set up some different computers around. One's going to be right there in their probation officer's office, right there where people can come in and out, right there and fill out the census. That's pretty much it, it's big money for us.
Very good. Questions?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Ginn.
Have you hired all of your enumerators already?
You know, that is one thing that's a little bit of a misunderstanding, I should have covered that earlier, but we are not actually hiring anybody, okay? The US Census Bureau does all the hiring. You'll see some yard signs around the city with the website for people to go to, they had a, the Census Bureau being, they had a big push on May 13th over at the Bank of America building where they opened up and helped people apply. We had a lot of response on that, we put it on our website, on our Facebook page. Jim Billings has been outstanding, helping put a lot of stuff out there for us, but that's a little bit of a misconception. We, cities don't do any of the hiring with that, that's all done from the Census Bureau.
Ross?
Did I hear you correctly in saying that if we go online and complete this census, then we should not be receiving one of these in the mail?
That's correct. If we go online, when we receive that first mailer and fill that out, we will not get that second mail or third mail or no enumerators coming to the house. The actual, the enumerators don't actually find out where they're going until one, maybe two days before they're going door to door.
Okay.
The actual addresses.
Okay.
But I will tell you this about the jobs, there are still jobs out there, they're still hiring. They were advertising back in October and November in Plaski County where they would be paying $14 for field workers, $15.50 for field supervisors. Now they've upped it to 19 and 23.50, so there are good paying part-time jobs out there.
Any other questions? Steve, thank you very much, you and your volunteers are doing a great job, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, let's go right on into unfinished business.
Oh, 2010, Councilmember Robinson?
We're going to hold that legislation, some of my constituents have some questions about it, so I need to get with the city attorney, and we're going to hold it. Mayor, can I say something?
Sure.
The thing that I do want to say is that this legislation is about signs, period. Not only campaign, but garage sales, signs, period. So we're not targeting one particular group or anything like that, it's about all signs.
Cleaning up our right of way.
We're going to clean up our right of way, you're right.
Good deal, thank you, no new business.
R 2032, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement for electric customer assistance with Central Arkansas Development Council.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh, 2033, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement, to the lease agreement with 10th Street Warehouse Associates LLC for warehouse space located at 10th Street, Suites 417 and 425.
Move for adoption. Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 2034, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at 200 Mosley Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
So moved.
Second. Call a public hearing, anyone here to speak on 200 Mosley Street? Anyone here to speak at 200 Mosley Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
R 2035, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
One, I believe you need to pull because it was sold. We got notice from code enforcement that it had sold.
We did, and I forgot to pass the word along, I apologize.
R 2035, I'm going to withdraw it.
Oh, 2015, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending the 2020 quota ordinance, ordinance number 9197, for the North Little Rock Parks and Recreation and Public Works Departments, declaring an emergency, first reading?
Ms. spin the readings.
Second. Motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh, 2016, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance waiving formal bidding requirements for the purchase of a switchgear from Federal Pacific for the Justice Building, declaring an emergency, first reading?
Move to suspend the readings. Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh, 2017, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance approving a change order in the amount of $76,870.50 for the Funland Drive Drainage Pipe Replacement Project, waiving formal bidding requirements appropriating funds, declaring an emergency, first reading?
Move to suspend all readings. Second. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh, 2018, Councilmember Ross?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 7934, which vacated and abandoned a street right of way at the intersection of North Olive Street and West 47th Street, and authorized the sale of the same to Rudolph Frazier, declaring an emergency, first reading?
Ms. spin the readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings. Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Oh, 2018, Councilmember Ross?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 7934, which vacated and abandoned a street right of way at the intersection of North Olive Street and West 47th Street, and authorized the sale of the same to Rudolph Frazier, declaring an emergency, first reading?
Ms. spin the readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. The, Ms. Ross, Mr. Frazier understands that the easement is there, is still there.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to explain what this was. This is something that goes back to April 2009. It's near Bridge Road Elementary, right there at the corner of Locust and 47th or McCain, some people call it McCain, there was a small corner of his yard when they widened that street, they made it four lanes with a turn lane, so there's basically five lanes there now. But when we, he wanted to purchase that property because he takes, he has his purple Martins, he takes care of it, so we did sell him that portion, but we had in there stipulation that if the city ever wanted to repurchase that property or needed that property, they could repurchase it at that price. Well now, you know, he's had some health issues and he's thinking about when he has to sell it, and that would be a deterrent, having that in there, that the city could repurchase it. So this is just to remove that one clause, but he does understand the easements are still there.
Okay. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Oh, 2019, Councilmember Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance reclassifying certain property located at 2524 Gribble Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, from conservation zoning classification to the R4 zoning classification by amending ordinance number 7697, adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, declaring an emergency, first reading?
Move to suspend the readings. Second. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
So moved. Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Do you know what he's building down there, Mr. Taylor?
He's thinking about building another house on it.
Single family home?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, Taylor.
It's okay. Oh, 2020, Councilmember Harris?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of the sidewalk requirements of Section 12.21 of the zoning ordinance and Section 9.11 of the subdivision ordinance for certain real property located along White Oak Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency, first reading?
Move to suspend the reading.
Second. On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Motion. Somebody give me a move. Move for adoption. Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Questions?
Questions, sorry. Ms. White?
I'm always hesitant to vote for sidewalk waivers. Could I have a better explanation of, than what's in this legislation, of why we would waive these sidewalks along here?
On the south side, and it would just, nobody would ever, nobody ever walk on the sidewalk, it would never be used. People don't like going up the street.
It's straight up the hill.
Right, kind of like Snake Hill?
It's about as bad as Snake Hill.
Kind of like Snake Hill, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, that's a good exercise. Is there ever any potential to build along that area on that side? I'm looking at the picture, so you don't know what I'm looking at.
Down below, not on, not, it'll never go all the way up.
Okay, so that will always be a green belt along there?
Well, I don't know about a green belt, but I mean, it's, they're, I think they're trying to subdivide, I think they're trying to first two or three, first two lots, you know, in the curve right there, and then, and then there's nothing going to be, you'd have to hang off a cliff to go on up, and I don't know if there's room for that, you know, either.
So there's no houses that potentially will be built along this area that we're going to waive the sidewalk?
Yes, there were, there's scheduled, they're trying to do three down, there's, there's two lots down there at the very end that kind of face the other, and then maybe one lot behind it, I haven't seen the flats, but there's.
I think what they're thinking is, is that at the bottom of the hill, there's two lots right here they can build on, and so if we made them do a sidewalk, it'd be a sidewalk to nowhere. Because once it, once it stops right there, it's too steep to build anything else, so it makes sense, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, it'd be a sidewalk that goes nowhere.
Ms. Ross, did you have a question?
Well, I was, are there any other sidewalks anywhere in this whole neighborhood?
Yeah, on the White Oak, I mean, down, on the bottom down there, on the left side.
So there are sidewalks down there on White Oak?
On the, on that one, on that one stretch there, yeah.
So this would not complete a, if someone wanted to walk up the hill or whatever, it wouldn't be, you know, like I said, Snake Hill's walked quite often, it's a good workout, so I didn't know.
To, it would be, if you required them to do sidewalks, it would be a sidewalk to nowhere, and it would be dead end, is all I'm saying.
So there's no potential for building at the top of the hill?
Right, I mean, you're going to have to, it would stop eventually, and nothing's ever going to be built there.
At the top of the hill?
And you'd have to bring in, I don't know, 20 loads of dirt just to get it up level to put a sidewalk on. So I mean, that's the, that's the main thing, so anyway.
Where are we?
Go ahead.
No, I'm just questioning, would Snake Hill, would even be allowed to be built a sidewalk that steep now due to ADA regulations? I mean, would it, I mean, if you're saying it's that, that difficult, then wouldn't ADA come into compliance and it wouldn't be able to be built?
Couldn't tell you. Chris was in here just a second ago.
Okay.
Sean, do you know if there's a requirement on sidewalks on how steep a sidewalk can be?
I wouldn't want to be in a wheelchair to put that one.
There's ADA requirements, but a sidewalk could still be more than that, but it would, wouldn't be ADA acceptable. It's sort of a gray area there, but yeah, I wouldn't want to, whoever said, have a wheelchair there, it wouldn't be safe.
Correct. On the motion.
Ross?
I'm going to pass.
White?
Say no.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Can I ask one more question, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Does the city allow sidewalks to be built that are not ADA?
Probably. I doubt it, we've done it in years, but at one point in time, we let them build one up Snake Hill.
Well, I know that's years ago, but I meant to current, current standards, I know that anytime.
I don't know if, if a developer wanted to build one that was steeper than what ADA was, we would probably let them, wouldn't we, Sean?
I'd have to ask Chris.
Okay.
See what's, because it's in the right of ways to sort of.
Well, wander out there and ask him, and we'll go ahead and get out of this, and then we'll come back.
But the thing is, is, you know, even if you don't have a sidewalk there, what we've seen all over town is they drive their scooters, right, in the street, which is gonna be probably the same grade as what your sidewalk would be.
Right. Let's do the emergency.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2021, Councilmember Baxter?
Please call it.
An ordinance allowing a special use to allow a food trailer in an I-2 zone for certain real property located at 10401 Malamal Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. First reading?
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2022, Councilmember Baxter?
About Wyatt?
I'm sorry. Wyatt?
Call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow a food truck court in a CPH zone for certain real property located at 3623 JFK Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency. First reading?
Move to suspend the rules and place it on third reading.
You want to suspend all readings?
Yes.
Got a motion to suspend all readings?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
O 2033, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement for electric customer assistance with Central Arkansas Development Council. I'm gonna withdraw it.
Wait for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Ginn?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Question?
Yeah, this food truck court that's gonna be on JFK, so this will allow several trucks?
Yes.
To be there?
Four.
It'll allow four?
Maximum.
And they have to have the licensing and all that stuff?
Absolutely, yes.
To be there? Okay.
The, Sean and Chris already left?
They're working out, you know.
Now, just talk to him in the morning, ask him to call Councilmember Ross and give him, give her an update on what his opinion is on it. Is that okay, Debbie?
Yeah, yeah, sure, I'm just curious.
Okay. All right, does that conclude legislation for us?
Mayor, I just wanted to have a comment about the food court.
Go ahead.
I've had, I've had a lot of your constituents and a lot of my friends that live in your ward call me, and they think that's a great idea. They'll get the parking issue worked out if it's, you know, and we look forward to dining in the food court, so. But I've had a lot of people contacting me and think that's a really good idea.
I was at the Levy United, where was it?
Jumpstart?
Jumpstart program, and some, some of our citizens were there, and they brought in the, those envelopes again about the service line warranty.